Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Byron Glenn is the chaplain at Mercy Hospital. I've asked him to give the invocation today and to keep in mind the many victims and the Stillwater incident from over the weekend. So, thank you for coming down. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman McAtee if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Well, let's pray. Gracious Lord, before we begin this assembly, we pause to remember and pray for the victims, their families, and the OSU students who suffered last Saturday in Stillwater. We know that no tragedy can separate us from your love, so we trust you to strengthen our Oklahoma community with your love, your comfort, and your goodness. And now, dear God, we bow our heads in recognition of your loving leadership and authority over us as our supreme ruler. Likewise, we recognize and are grateful for the good works of our elected officials gathered here this day. Enable them, oh Lord, to remain true to their individual convictions. Yet also to strive to work together for the good of all citizens of this city. Grant them insight to be wise managers of our city's resources. Give them foresight as they work to build a strong and lasting city which will benefit our future citizens. Should their negotiations bog down, remind them, our Father, they will accomplish more by cooperation. Align their purposes as they pursue the common values of truth, justice, freedom, and equality of opportunity for their constituents. Even more, may our city council members set a good example for the future generations by their cooperative efforts to enhance the quality of life for all who will live and visit here. God, may your Holy Spirit draw us together, not only in our citizenship, but also in our relationships. May the work of this council help us to truly enjoy the blessings of our friends, our families, and our relationship to you, our God. We ask for your blessings through the holy name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Face the flag. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started this morning, we have a special visitor in town. Alan, do you want to come forward? Alan Ashley is the chief of sports performance for the United States Olympic Committee, and he is in town checking out the Whitewater facility that's under construction. And you and I had a few minutes to talk beforehand, but I appreciate all the nice comments you've made about our city's commitment to your sport.
Well, we're really, really proud to be here and very, very thankful for the citizens of Oklahoma City and for everything you've done to support athletes today and in the future. And, you know, this is what really makes the Olympic movement in our country work, is communities like this that pull together and help kids and help families experience sport. And so, it's a completely unique environment here. Every time I come here and visit, I'm just in awe of what you have all done together to put together these facilities out on the river. And every time I come, it's something new, and new kids are involved, and new families are involved. So, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the U.S. Olympic Committee for everything you've done to support us. Thank you.
Well, and sometimes, we're just glad to have water, you know, in the river. So, some of us that are old enough to remember when, you know, that seemed like a distant dream. But the Olympic trials are scheduled for May 6th and 7th in Oklahoma City?
Uh, yeah, actually, May 7th and 8th. We'll have a 7th and 8th here in Oklahoma City, as well as, we're going to bring a road show to town. We're doing for the year leading into the Olympic Games, we're going to various communities around the country and introducing people to the Olympic movement. You get a chance to go and get a photograph with an Olympic medal, look at Olympic memorabilia, meet athletes, and engage in, you know, learning about the Olympic Games in ways that we haven't before, so that we can extend the Olympic experience and the Olympic values beyond just the 17 days of the Games, but into that whole year leading into it. So, we're going to bring that here to Oklahoma City as well, and we're very excited about that.
Well, you know, we are. Hopefully, that'll be during the NBA playoffs, so it might be a good time to invite your family and friends from around the country to come to Oklahoma City. There's going to be a lot going on, May 7th and 8th, the United States Olympic Trials on our new Whitewater facility, which should open in the spring. Alan, thank you, and let's show our appreciation to Alan and all the people who brought you there. Thank you, Alan. You know, the USOC can take their events a lot of different places, and Alan and his staff have brought a number of world-class athletes to Oklahoma City, and economic development of all of that is adding up quickly. And our participation continues. Alan, thank you. It is also trick-or-treat week, and Doug Cooper is here as we make an official proclamation about October 31st. Doug, come on in. Doug, oh my gosh, Doug's been attacked by arachnophobia.
It is trick-or-treat, Mayor.
It is. We have a proclamation, I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Halloween is a time for jack-o'-lanterns and the annual appearance of ghosts, goblins, and strange and mysterious creatures. Whereas our city's children celebrate Halloween by dressing in costumes and visiting homes in their neighborhoods to receive traditional holiday treats. The annual Halloween activities provide an opportunity for people in our community to become better acquainted. It is important to our community that children be allowed to enjoy these traditional activities, but that measures be taken to ensure the safety of the children and protect the rights of homeowners. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Saturday, October 31st, as Trick or Treat Night in Oklahoma City, and he encourages children and adults to cooperate in limiting the time of activities to the afternoon and early evening hours, that households indicate their willingness to welcome their neighbors by turning on their porch and exterior lights, and that youngsters only call on homes so lighted, and he also asks the cooperation of all citizens, young and old, in making this a happy and safe occasion for all.
Let's show our cooperation and appreciation. Trick or Treat Night. Doug, anything you want to add, advice to our citizens this week?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. It is a fun night, and we want the children to have as much fun as they possibly can, but we want them to be safe. So, again, if your church is having a trunk and treat, things along those lines, that's a good place to go. The city is doing a trunk and treat itself for its employees and what have you. But if you do go into neighborhoods, again, as the proclamation says, as the mayor points out, take them only to the houses that are well-lit, and make sure that if it is unwrapped foods or candies, that you inspect it very closely. We want to make sure everybody stays safe and sound this year. And then, if you are driving on that evening, let's watch out for the ghouls and goblins that may dart across the street, and be safe, and make sure we have a happy trick-or-treat.
And that is Saturday.
Saturday, again, before sundown is the best time to be out and about. You can see each other, see the neighborhood, compare costumes, and enjoy the evening, but let's make sure it stays safe.
And we'll all hope the weather cooperates for the kids, too. Thanks, Doug, really appreciate it. Let's show our appreciation to Doug and his staff. Well done, Doug. Thanks. Awesome. Like ET. All right. We also do a lot of fall cleanup work around the city. I think Oklahoma City has come so far on beautification. Our coordinating agency is Oklahoma City Beautiful. They do such a great job of really one of the hardest parts of the effort, and that is the coordination with all of the people that want to do something. And we work through neighborhood groups and companies that want to get out in the community and make it a community project. And so, Lisa, I'll ask you and your staff to come forward and help me coordinate this, but they have presented many awards to different organizations around the city who have done, well, they've gone beyond the call of normal duty in cleaning up their neighborhood or a specific part of the city. So, I'm going to hand you the microphone and let you kind of take this from here.
Okay. We are just thrilled to work with Oklahoma City and Parks Department to get wonderful volunteers out every year to adopt. We have over 56 parks adopted. We have some available if you would like to join us. And we just help pick up the trash. A lot of our adopters do some landscape work, anything just to help keep our parks clean and help out the city budget with a little bit of help for cleaning. And so, we are thrilled to be here today to honor the best of the best.
All right. Yeah, I'll bring them up. All right, first of all, representing Ward 1, the Oklahoma City Sail and Power Squadron. And attending today, Stephen Glenda Bryant, Ron Huff, Bob Lubin, Peggy Anglin, Mike Ellis, Jason Ellis, and Karen Rosler. Come on up. Let's show our congratulations to these two. Okay. All right, so who gets to take home the trophy?
We are commander.
All right, well, congratulations and thanks for all this. There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's show our appreciation. Thank you all. Put that in the neighborhood newsletter. Get even a bigger crowd next year. Thanks for what you do. We didn't meet the young man there.
Jacob.
Hey, Jacob. Oh, man. That's okay, it'll get better, man. All right. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you guys. All right, representing Ward 2, Crown Heights and Edgemere Heights Homeowners Association, Sharon Reeves, Dorothy Thadani, and John Joyce. Whoever's here, come on up.
Thank you all so much.
How many people did you have out helping?
Well, it's kind of an ongoing thing.
As many as we can get.
You had pretty good cooperation with your neighborhood?
Very good.
It's well-known around the community, so thank you all very much.
Let's show our appreciation again. From Ward 3, Lidle Grove Neighborhood Association is our winner. They're out picking up trash and couldn't make it this morning, but in absentia, let's show a round of applause for Ward 3's efforts. Ward 4, we just can't get enough positive things coming to us from Boeing. Boeing has several employees that are here. Come on up, guys. They have been cleaning up, let's see, the area around Lake Stanley Draper, which is not far from the Boeing headquarters. Gives me a chance to remind people that Boeing is committed to heading toward 3,000 employees by next summer, and many of these jobs coming to us from the west coast and California and Seattle. And so, we just love that you all have landed so safely, so to speak, in Oklahoma City and continue to do great things. And to get your employees out and about in the community, make them part of making Oklahoma City a better place, you have committed to picking up trash in your part of the city. So, thank you for what you're doing. And as part of our appreciation, we have our Adopt a Park program. All right, you bet. Thank you very much. Let's show our appreciation to Boeing. Thanks, thank you very much. Thanks very much. Thank you. Good to see you all. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for what you're doing. All right, in Ward 6, the Miller Neighborhood Association, and Bruce Hall is here representing the Miller Neighborhood. Let's show our appreciation to Bruce and all his neighbors. How many people do you have in the Miller Neighborhood working on this?
Well, we have, we're like Edgemere, we have constant ongoing things every month. So, we have several people that, when they walk their dogs, they also pick up trash.
There you go. A trash picking up tip from the Miller Neighborhood.
All you need is a doggie station, and they will come.
Well, here's your award, and a small token of our appreciation for what you're doing. Thank you very much. Thank you, Bruce, for being considerate. Ward 7, the Lincoln Terrace Neighborhood Association, Karen Pettit, Bree Dorr, Samania, Meredith and Andrew Beiford, and Mark Smith. Come on up.
We lost it here.
Okay. They go pick up trash, I get it. We've got an award that shows a token of our appreciation. Of course, Lincoln Terrace is the area around the state Capitol Building, a very high-profile area for our visitors, so everything you do in beautification in that area makes us all look good. So, thank you for your work, and pass along our appreciation to your citizens. All right, thank you. And, you know, many of these I've seen up here before in annual events, but I don't know that we've seen anybody often up here as the Surrey Hills Home and Garden Club. So, Surrey Hills, come on up. These ladies represent a very active organization in far west and north Oklahoma City, and they've been at it for a long, long time. Nancy Atha, Jim and Mary Garrett, Joyce Gage, and Jerry Urban are the names we have here. But thank you all for your work. Well, you should feel good about it, but your neighborhood is well-known for being well-organized, and it doesn't surprise me that Surrey Hills is doing so well on beautification. You should be. Thank you very much.
I accept this on behalf of the Garden Club, but also on behalf of the community, because without the support of the community, we couldn't do what we do.
You're absolutely right. Thank you very much. Uh-huh, thanks. And our overall winner is the Friends of Martin Park. Donna McAvitts is here. Donna, thank you. An award for you. And, you know, I suspect there's people out there that have not been to Martin Park Nature Center recently, because so many improvements have been made over the last couple of years. And of course, with the increased visitation comes more opportunities for the Friends of Martin Park to get out there and help with the cleanup aspects. But thank you so much, and I'm going to give you a chance to just brag on Martin Park Nature Center and get this crowd to come out there.
It's 144 acres of native plants, animals. You can come out and see deer, skunks, raccoons. We have a new courage trail that's a wheelchair and accessible to anyone of any age, and it's just a beautiful nature park, so come on out.
Located off, well, Memorial Road between MacArthur and Giridian?
Correct.
Okay. So, Martin Park Nature Center. Get on out there, and you'll be able to see how the beautification efforts have improved the looks a great deal.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let's thank all of our winners. Look for a motion on the two appointments. All right, cast your votes on item 3. Passed unanimously. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for October 13th. 4B is to approve the journal for September 29th. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, just a couple this morning, on page 21, under item 9H1, 9H1, item A, 1415 East Euclid, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item I, 2320 Northwest 39th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then, down on 9I1, again, item C, 1415 North Euclid, we ask that that be stricken. Owner secured. And item J, 2320 Northwest 39th Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, item 6 is revocable permits, and we have four to deal with today. The first is from the Capitol Hill Main Street, Inc., who is asking to host the Haunt the Hill effort on Southwest 25th Street in Capitol Hill. Is anybody here representing that organization today? All right, Pete, you want to make a motion on this?
I'd move approval.
All right, cast your votes on 6A. It passes unanimously. Item 6B is a revocable right-of-way permit from OKC Events and Entertainment to host the OKC Halloween Parade and Costume Party, which will be on Broadway, very near Automobile Alley. Is there anyone here representing this event? Oh, there's Mike McCullough. Mike?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We'd like to, of course, thank the city, the city staff that helps us coordinate this event. Automobile Alley, which is a sponsor of the event. This is the ninth year we've had a Halloween parade, and we had a good turnout last year, about 10,000 people. It's a free family holiday event sponsored by Air Comfort Solutions. We also, what's a little unique about the parade these past two years is we partner with Allied Arts, and all the entry fees go to Allied Arts. We also commission with an artist each year to design the awards, and so each winner gets an original piece of art from an Allied Arts artist. Also new this year is the YMCA is having a kid zone prior to the parade with face painting, et cetera, as, of course, they are part of Automobile Alley there at 4th and Broadway. And our feature attraction, the parade starts at 7:00, starts at about 11th and Broadway and goes to 4th and Broadway. Our featured attraction this year is Buddy the Dinosaur, which is a helium parade balloon that stands 50 feet tall and requires 4,000 cubic feet of helium to inflate. So, weather permitting, we'll have Buddy here. He'll be our grand marshal, and we invite everybody to come out and enjoy the Halloween parade.
Automobile Alley, what time on?
7:00 PM. We start staging at 6:00, and we usually have the streets open by about 8:30, which is important to a lot of people.
All right, so Saturday night, Automobile Alley?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mike, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item C is a request from OKC Pride to host the OKC Pride Halloween Block Party. This will be on Northwest 39th Street. Is there anyone here representing this event?
Yes.
Morning.
Good morning. Mayor and Council, my name's Michael Clark. I'm the president of OKC Pride. Want to thank all the city staff for their support getting ready. This is our second annual Treats and Tricks on 39th Party. It'll go from 8:00 until midnight. We'll have live music and DJ, a costume contest, and food and beer vendors. We expect a great turnout and a really fun time.
Sounds like it. What time do you want people together?
It goes from 8:00 until midnight. We're going to close down the roads about 4:00 to get set up, and we're going to go ahead and leave. It's just on Northwest 39th between Penn and Barnes. We're going to leave them closed until 3:00 to give us time to get cleaned up, and also so that there isn't any confusion with traffic, with, you know, people going forth between the bars. This year, it's a nice event. We've got Party Galaxy sponsoring, as well as all of the local bars, Tramps, The Boom, The Copa, Finish Line, Apothecary 39, The Rec Room, and Phoenix Rising. So, they've all got special events going on that evening as well, and it's just making it a nice, fun neighborhood association party.
All right, Saturday night?
Saturday night. Come see us.
How about a motion?
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck. Item D is a revocable right-of-way permit from Perinatal Center of Oklahoma to host the Run Down Scary Place. Linda and Megan are here. Good morning.
Good morning.
We will need your name and address, just for the record.
Do you want me, you want name and address?
Name and ad, yes.
Linda Mosslander.
And Morgan Curtis.
All right, thank you.
We work for Perinatal Center of Oklahoma, and we are, this is the first year that we're hosting a charity run for Positive Tomorrow's, and it's called a Run Down Scary Place, which is down by the Plaza District. It's a 5K and a fun run and a costume contest. It's Saturday morning, the costume contest is at 8:30, and then the run is 9:00 and 9:15.
Can you sign up on Saturday morning if you come by?
Yes, you can.
Okay, so what time should people show up if they want to be a participant?
8:00 and get signed up, and then you can all be part of the costume contest at 8:30.
All right, so Plaza District, Saturday morning.
16th and Indiana is where you need to come start.
16th and Indiana. Sounds great. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, Meg, you want to make a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Thanks.
All right, we'll reassess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are five items. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, two items. All right, comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
Are there any other items that need consideration?
All right, are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to mention 7S and 7BC.
F and BC.
S and BC.
All right. All right, Meg, go ahead and jump in.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that S, item S, is our annual contract with the, and I think, with the Homeless Alliance, who, as we all know, provides such extraordinary services to those in most need in our community. And I didn't know whether Dan was here today, but I just wanted to publicly recognize Dan for all of his efforts in coordinating the many, many folks that help provide services to those in need in our community.
I don't think everybody realizes that you and Pete White and Sam Bowman were really drivers behind getting that put to bed, or get that up and running and getting that project off the ground.
Well, and our staff, who was incredibly creative and helpful as we were able to receive some of the stimulus dollars a number of years ago. We wouldn't, would not have had the funds available to create that shelter and resource that we have.
You know, we're still working on it, but it's become sort of a model. I mean, we're having people from other communities come in and look at it, because it seems to be a best practice worth duplicating in other places, so.
And we certainly know that providing housing is one of the most critical issues, and they've just opened their 20-unit permanent, semi-permanent housing facility on the campus itself, which is a huge accomplishment. The second item, 7BC, is just, it's a very simple matter. It's some funding for some ADA ramps and some sidewalks, and I just wanted to make a brief comment about personal experience with ramps these days, and they're hard. They're hard to get around. They're steep. And I just, I spoke to Eric a little earlier. You know, we've come so far with Project 180 and all of the accessibility downtown, but it still is complicated. And so, as we're designing these projects, I want people to think, you know, about the full scope of people that might use them. Some folks are large and strong, and other people are smaller, and I think about, you know, kids trying to push themselves up these little ramps. I did a couple of wheelies the other day, and it doesn't feel very comfortable in a wheelchair. So, I just want to be really cognizant. We've come a giant way, and thanks to Pam Henry and so many of your folks on the Mayor's Disability Committee. I know we're making progress, but just from a, until you have a personal experience, perhaps you don't have a chance to really see how complicated getting around can be. So, I'm grateful for the city, but let's keep our eyes open to do as much more as we can.
Okay. Any other comments on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 8 is the concurrence docket. All right, any comments or individual considerations on the consent docket? Concurrence docket, I mean. All right, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. That moves us to item 9, which is items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a couple of zoning cases. The first is in Ward 7 at 13236 Northeastern Avenue. It's currently our one single family, and it would become a new simplified plan unit development if it passes. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clark, has anyone signed up? No one has signed up. This item did pass the planning commission on September 10th. With, the planning commission did recommend approval, so with that said, I move for approval.
I'm just looking at the map there. Where is this, John? Eastern? I don't see a cross street on there.
I believe the cross street would be almost Edmund. The cross street will.
Okay, that's north of the Turnpike, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, way up there. Okay, looks like a good project.
But it's always, it's between the Turnpike and Memorial Road.
Okay. And we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions from anyone on this item? We're getting ready to vote on item nine A. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item nine B is also for final hearing today. We have a few people that have signed up to speak. It's a zoning issue in Ward Three at 10101 Southwest 59th Street. It's currently double A agricultural, and it would be a new planned unit development if passed. Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, we do have some people that have signed up. The applicant is present. What I'd like to do is allow the applicant to present what the PUD is intended to do and some of the background, and then call the people who have signed up to come up and speak after he makes his presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. I'm here today on behalf of the developer, who is also with us today, Gary Owens, as well as Mark Grubbs, who's a civil engineer for this project. This is an 80-acre PUD on Southwest 59th, just west of Morgan, and what we have is a PUD that would allow this to be developed in a mix of half-acre lots and one-acre lots. When we originally filed this PUD, we had all half-acre lots, but we had several meetings with the neighbors. They expressed three main concerns: density, the use of our private sanitary sewer solutions, and drainage. So, what we've done is we have a nice, natural, occurring creek that runs through it. The neighbors that had some problems are all to the east, so what we agreed to do is modify the PUD so that all the lots to the east of the creek are one-acre lots rather than the half-acre lots. So, we will do the one-acre lots east of the creek, the half-acre lots west of the creek. What we have is a parcel that, under the comprehensive plan, is designated under the urban growth designation. What that means is the city has identified this area as a future urbanization area, and what happens is, as services become available, development occurs at higher densities than have occurred in the past. What staff will tell you, the reason they recommended approval in part is because of that, and what we have is water. We are so close that water is required to be extended in this development. Because of the urbanization that is planned for this area, the city has requested that the line be oversized to serve this development, to also serve future development to the north and the west. So, the line will be oversized, but sewer is not accessible. We can't access it. It's too far away. And so, what you see is, you see densities at higher than what we've seen in the past, but not the 6,000 square foot lots that you might see if you have both sewer and water. So, with the water, what we've proposed is the one-acre lots, the half-acre lots. The next issue was the aerobic system. So, without sewer, you know, we have to find a way to dispose of our waste, and so what you can do is you can either do septic systems with lateral lines, or you can do aerobic systems. Most soil in Oklahoma will not perk, which is what is required for a septic system with lateral lines. We are willing to try, and we came to an agreement yesterday with the neighbors, that all those one-acre lots to the east, we will certainly try to install the septic with lateral lines, but it all comes down to DEQ and whether or not they will permit it based on the perk rate of the soil. So, if not, we will have to install the aerobic systems. Now, DEQ regulates those. They are permitted on half-acre lots. They are common through the city. They're common throughout the state of Oklahoma when you have water. And so, what we're proposing is a means that is certainly legally permissible, is regulated through the state Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, and is a fantastic solution to provide onsite private sanitary sewer when you don't have public sewer. The other issue is drainage. This area of the city has been pounded with 500-year rain events several times, obviously more than once every 500 years, as I think Councilman White noted. And so, we're in an area that, even though those things have occurred, this basin does not require detention. We are, however, going to provide a detention pond. It'll be about five to six acres, and our engineers confident that that will provide some relief. Obviously, state law does not permit us to put out more water than the historic rate of release, and so that with this five to six-acre detention pond, we're confident that that will help. We have modified the putt in several other ways. The folks to the east have no sewer or water. What we are willing to do and have designed and drafted into our PUD is we will install our water line on the eastern portion of our site so that it is stubbed, that if any of those neighbors want to tap into the city water, they'll be able to do so fairly easily by those stubs that we're providing. Additionally, we offered their, the neighbors to the east are served by a gravel road that's private. What we had initially offered to do is, instead of building our own road, so that there's two roads here, we would, at our cost, construct their gravel road, pave it to city standards. Obviously, that'd be dedicated to the city. The neighbors did not want that. They wanted to maintain their private gravel road, and that's, you know, that's fine with us, but that was an offer that we made. Again, I talked about the detention, and we're agreeing to provide the sidewalks along the arterial on Southwest 59th, as the staff had requested. You know, this is coming to you with the recommendation for denial. The basis for the denial, in large part, was due to two things: the aerobic system, the members on the planning commission that don't like the ability to use those, but as we tried to argue then, if a developer is intending to use a means that is legally permissible, he should be able to do so. I don't think that's a grounds by which to deny a zoning application, especially considering they're used throughout the city. And the other is the density, and as staff will tell you, and as they recommended approval, the density is certainly appropriate based on the comp plan designation and the availability of the city services, that being water. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
I have one.
Aerobic system is approved by the DEQ?
Yes, sir. We actually have to go get a permit from the DEQ.
The PUD that we have in front of us doesn't delineate the one track being a minimum lot size of one acre and another one being minimum size of a half acre. Is that being, is that something we're going to have to amend before, or is it? Yeah, tell me how that works.
Yeah, so, great question. That was done, I guess, kind of later, and so we have submitted that to city staff. The city clerk's office does have that revised PUD that states, and that's going to be Track One, and it's item 8.1.1A. Minimum lot size shall be one acre, 43, 560 square feet on the east side of the creek.
All right. David, we may need you again, but you can go ahead and sit down.
I have a question about the road. You said that the neighborhood wants a gravel road and not a city-maintained road. Did I understand that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Larry, you want to, I mean, to call up the people that have signed up?
Yes, call up the people that have.
All right, Travisa Provine?
Hi, I'll clear up why we want to keep our gravel road. It's because it's part of our land.
Teresa, before you get started.
I live at 5800 South Pleasant Hill. I'm a retired hydrologist, and that gravel road is in our land, each, everybody's land. It's not, you know, none of it has been put toward that. It's all part of our land, so we don't want to give it up. There's only four houses on there. We don't want the traffic. So, and our roads, we've been maintaining it, and it's a good gravel road. But I come here with lots of concerns, and something I found out about yesterday was that even if Oklahoma City has the law to do something, is it really the right thing to do? And that's what I'm going to ask all of you right now. These aerobic systems are a mess. Some states have outlawed them. Some states have regulations that you wouldn't believe, that you have to literally sign up with them and that you have to maintain them. They make you maintain them twice a year, because if you don't, then what they do after two or three years of non-maintenance is they spill out fecal material and viruses on the land. Everybody's got a neighbor who has grass a little high, who has cars, maybe five or six cars in front of their house. This is going to be the neighbor who doesn't take care of this system. Most counties around Oklahoma City require one acre, minimum one acre for these systems. DEQ is against. I have talked to Matt Stone, who's head of the floodplain management, and they are just now starting to see the problems with these systems. These systems have been going for the last 10 to 15 years. The nitrates that are being released into the groundwater and into the soil are so high that they're talking to me, we're both talking together about going to the state to get the law changed on these systems. Right now, Oklahoma City allows it. Creighton County doesn't. Edmund allows one acre. A half acre is not enough room. I've got a PhD in this, in this thing that, notebook that I included for y'all to read. I have a PhD from OSU that says you shouldn't even let your children play in the affluent water that comes out of it. That happens every night. The water come, the water from, they usually have it set up from two to six. The water is drained out of these tanks onto the ground. You shouldn't even let your dogs out in it. You take a chance of going out yourself and tracking this water back into your house. Now, how would you like to have a neighbor that's not taking care of the aerobic system? And you say you're a little bit lower than that house. Guess where his affluent's going to drain to? I've shown a map. I walked this creek. That was what I did for the Forest Service. I walk creeks, and then I modeled them, and this right here is a map. Look at the area, this area right here. This is in the floodplain of the proposed area. That's over 30% of it is in a floodplain, not a 500-year, 100-year. Five, 10, 15, 100-year floodplain. This has happened because of all the development that Mustang has done. I know there wasn't anything that y'all could have done, but the landowner should have come to Oklahoma City and should have, Oklahoma City should have helped at least mitigate before they put these houses up, and because it was going to cause this kind of trouble. This map is, by the way, by, from 2008. They have since spent, they have since built numerous homes more in that area.
Teresa, we got a lot of other people to hear from. Can you wrap it up quickly?
Well, it's hard to wrap up. When I walked this area, and here's the floodplain now, the floodplain is expanded by a third. I walked it after the June event, basically. The floodplain covers, also, they never talk about the oil well that's in the floodplain. There's an operating oil well in the floodplain, has its own pad. Law, I called the consulting company, our engineer, our petroleum man, or geologist that lives on the block, gave me his information, and I also called the company that controls that, and they said that you cannot build within 300 feet. Oklahoma City told me yesterday the law was 125 feet. Oil company says 300 feet of an active oil well. Can't use the road. There's five acres there that is unusable, that they have, I don't know, 10 houses built upon.
Teresa, thanks very much for coming down.
Can I say just one more thing?
Sharla Mar, go ahead. Sharla, Mayor, make your way up.
This is, this greatly affects the people downstream. These people have, have, their wells, number one, have been contaminated by this last thing. Their houses have been breached. People have walls around their house downstream of this creek to keep this creek from flooding their house. I mean, this development should never go beyond.
Teresa, you said one more thing. Thanks very much. Sharla?
I am Sharla, Mayor. I live at 5401 South Morgan Road, and we are here again in protest. We've been in this building so many times in the last year. We have had many, many meetings with the proposed, with the builders team. We are always told that our concerns are not cost-effective. Our main concerns are the lot sizes. The density is way too thick for this area. If you look at the surrounding land, those are all five to 10-acre lots. My lot is, touches the very top corner of this proposed rezoning. My lot is 10 acres. Everything to the north of me is 20, 40, or more. Every time we've talked to them, we've asked for the same thing, five acres or more. It would be better for the septic systems that they want to put in. It would be more complementary to the surrounding homes, and we're always told that that is not cost-effective. Again, we're going to touch on those septic systems because I have a acquaintance who owns a plumbing company, and he said his, most of his money, most of his income is from correcting these aerobic septic systems. They have an extremely high failure rate. Our third concern is the flooding, which is going to be drastically increased. I do have some photos of flooding down this entire creek line. We moved into our home five years ago, and we had no knowledge of what these creeks will do when we have a rainy season until we had our first rainy season. We have rebuilt our south fence line, which is the one that touches that acreage. We have rebuilt that fence line at least three times. Because of all of the progress to the south of it, everything, every time it rains, it picks up all the debris in everybody's backyards that are along that creek line, and it washes it downstream, and because we're on acreages, we have fences. The fences catch all the debris, tears the fences out. We, again, we met with these people several, several times, and they have made some changes, but they haven't made the changes that we've asked for.
Okay.
We really feel that the density is the biggest issue. It is not complementary to the surrounding homes.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you.
I mean, Sharla. Gary Jones? Good morning, Gary. We'll need your name and address for the record.
I'm Gary Jones, and I live at 5700 Pleasant Hill. I'm the center home there on the third up from 59th. Want to speak about the density. That was one of the main concerns I have. I understand Oklahoma City wants to develop this. It's been agricultural. I guess Oklahoma City wants to develop it. Couple of, two or three items. What you've heard before about the flooding is tremendous. It is. I've lived there almost 20 years, in fact, a little over 20 years, and not just a heavy rain, but just a moderate rain at times due to all the development that is south of us now. Basically, causes a flooding situation. Any runoff from this additional is going to have to be taken care of, or we're going to have a worse problem we do now. As far as debris, yes, we get telephone poles, stockade fence, you name it in there. Anything that goes in there ends up in our properties. It doesn't show on the map there, but that creek where it keeps going up towards the top does intersect, and there's quite a problem there when it reaches that point. Of course, it backs up once it reaches that point right there. So, that is a concern, because, I mean, it's a tremendous amount of water. The other thing is, we're all on wells. These are quicksand wells. I don't know how much information you guys have on what the wells are like out there. Most of them, about 60-foot, they pick up the water through a quicksand strata, and we're fed off the creek, so we're concerned about what goes in that creek. The runoff from this other side when it backs up is going to fill into the creek as it comes to stagnant stop, and then we're going to be drinking that. There's another issue as far as where Pleasant Hill is. It's right on the hill. We have a high traffic load due to the new school that was placed south, or placed east of us there, 59th being a two-lane road. The hill is right there at Pleasant Hill, and the visibility coming from the west is highly restricted. Where they would put a road on that side to provide access and not, you know, pose a great hazard to people either exiting or entering, I don't know. There's not much of an opportunity, because it'd be a blind spot. We also have wildlife. I had four deer in my yard yesterday, and, I mean, I've got game cameras out. I'm on a little over five acres. I mean, I've enjoyed that. That's why I moved out of the edge of Oklahoma City limits, not to get out of Oklahoma City, but to enjoy a country life. You know, of course, I understand we have developed tremendously, but there's a huge amount of wildlife in that area there, which will be displaced. And, you know, we talked this morning, we're giving awards for, you know, wildlife areas and stuff, and yet we're going to displace this wildlife. I'm like, you know, most, everybody would enjoy seeing wild turkeys or deer in their yard, you know. We're in a city environment. It's quite a, you know, blessing to get to see a little wildlife once in a while. That's about all I have to say. I do appreciate you hearing my concerns.
All right. Gary, thank you. Let's see. Homoyun? Did I pronounce it correctly? Okay. We appreciate your attendance today. Justin Owens? Okay. And Gary Owens? Okay. Ready to speak if needed? Ready to speak if needed?
Mayor, I don't have anything to say, but I'll be answering the question.
Okay. Well, if council has any questions, we, yeah, stand by. Larry, what do you wanna do next?
Let's hear back from the applicant.
Briefly, on the issue of the aerobics. You know, the aerobic systems work because there's a series of tanks and chambers, and the water is treated prior to it being discharged. And so, once it's discharged, it is a treated water product. That is, is safe. If it wasn't safe, the State Department of Environmental Quality would not permit these. The distance between the neighbors driveway and ours is somewhere between four and five hundred feet. A typical site distance requirement is two hundred feet in the city, so we exceed by more than double that minimum standard for site distance. So, with that, we would ask for your approval.
David, have you met with DEQ? 'Cause I'm concerned with the commentary that if DEQ is actually, you know, looking at this and considering changing state law to allow this...
I don't believe that they're looking at changing the state law. They are permitted. They are used throughout this city, throughout the state. The first time I've ever heard that that might be the case is in, is in this project. I have several other projects going on currently where there's no protest, that we're also using the aerobic systems. They are very common in areas such as this, where you have water but no sewer. And so, there is no issue from DEQ.
The second thing is, these photos of flooding are pretty severe. Have you had a chance to look at those?
Yeah, we have, and we've coordinated with Public Works, and as I said, you know, we've had a couple of things at issue here. We've obviously had some five-hundred-year rain events. Some of the flooding of the homes downstream, some of those are built in the floodplain. They're built low, and so that kinda adds to the problem. But we're gonna add a, you know, five-to-six-acre detention pond, that we believe will help alleviate some of that, in addition.
And physically, where does that go? Where's the...
If you can see the hashed line, so it goes to that, the north of the creek, this whole area will be a detention pond. It will have to work, obviously, there through FEMA and the Corps to permit that, and the city will also, obviously, be involved.
Quick question. Who will maintain the pond, the detention pond?
Great question. The HOA will maintain that.
So, the HOA, in their policies, it will state that?
Yes. In fact, I believe the PUD says that all common areas, which this will be a common area, must be maintained by the HOA.
So, Eric, do we have experience with lots of other developments that use this type of septic system?
I'm not sure I'm the right one to comment on the septic. I can definitely answer any drainage questions, though, so...
Okay, all right. So, are you...
While you're up there, can you tell us a little bit about this detention pond and your thoughts on it, please, Eric? So, as we've reviewed the preliminary documents, which is the PUD, I guess the one comment that I would say is that there's a lot of engineering documents that have not yet been submitted for review and approval. So, we're at a very early phase in this PUD process. There's the plating process that would be underway. There would be drainage studies submitted. There would be formal plans submitted for any paving or other public improvements. And so, we're not to that point yet. So, as we look at this as a proposed site, as a proposed development, and we have looked at the requirements, detention's not required at this location, although there's an agreement from the developer to provide detention. We'll look at that study and that plan when it comes in. But it will be required to meet all of the regular city drainage ordinance requirements, and so, once we get those technical details, we'll actually be able to compare that. We cannot offer approval until we get those plans and they meet the requirements. We're just simply not there yet. But the creek is private. It's not a public creek, so it's not under public maintenance at this point. So, I think the comments regarding the maintenance, it is gonna be up to the property owners or the HOA to maintain that. There is a lot of floodplain in the area, and I think the other comment that I would make is, we do develop in the floodplain. We do not develop in the floodway. So, the city restricts development in floodways in all areas of the city. But if you build to the finished floors, one foot above the base flood elevation, floodway, floodplain development is possible. So, again, we'll be looking at the engineered drawings for those when they're submitted.
So, what you're saying is, the details of all the drainage issues are going to be looked at, at the plating?
Or as a part of the engineering plan process. So, in this case, when development occurs in the floodplain, most likely, a LOMER, a letter of map revision, is gonna be required, and that's something that also FEMA's gonna have some input on as well. So, there's probably gonna be some revisions to the floodplains after they propose the development, the different elevations of the construction, and so that's yet to come as well. We don't have an opportunity to review that until it's submitted. But again, construction can't proceed until that's approved.
And the staff report that went to Planning Commission was for approval of the application, correct?
For the PUD is what is on the agenda today.
Yes. With the Planning Commission.
From a Public Works Engineering Review perspective, we're in agreement with the PUD as it stands today.
My experience in rural developments has to do with something the lady raised about the hydrology, and that has to do with long-term maintenance. Although, I've seen many more examples of private road agreements failed than I have anything else. So, that was, that was the basis of my question. You made the point, lady made the point, that what if somebody doesn't maintain the aerobic system? Well, representing an area that's probably eighty-five percent in terms of land area, rural, I've seen the road problem many more off, many more off, times more often than I have anything else, where one person bails on the road agreement, and then everybody's stuck with trying to do it, and then the second person does it, and then the third person does it, and the road is what is the big problem, at least in southeast Oklahoma City. The, since this is a PUD, it seems to me that you might be able to incorporate into the HOA some kind of a required maintenance requirement on the aerobic systems, if that's problematic. I mean, somebody, people are gonna have to maintain the system for it to work. I think placing something in the PUD that said the PUD could enforce their failure to do it might solve that problem. Frankly, I've got two or three developments, and I don't have those kinda problems. But I see that it could become a problem if somebody didn't do the maintenance.
And we're happy to amend the PUD to state that, you know, all lots that utilize the aerobic system shall maintain in conformance with the DEQ regulations.
To me, the bigger problem is the water problem. I, you know, some of you have listened to my concerns about how often five-hundred-year floods can happen, and they be, not be considered five-hundred-year floods anymore. I think your, the opportunity to do the detention facility may solve that. The detention is, the water at that point flows from north, from south to north, is that right? And mainly, this debris is coming from Mustang. Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
And, and it, right south of this map is a residential, is it, where's the residential area that stuff would come from?
Immediately south.
Well, you're gonna have to have a pretty robust maintenance program if we have another rain like that to clean that mess up that comes out of Mustang. Not the mess that's created by the water that rains here, but the water that rains on you south.
Correct.
And you, you're confident that you've got those, that kinda language in the HOA?
Marcia, could I ask you to talk to us just a little bit about this system and what we've seen in Oklahoma City?
Sure. So, here's my background memory. About 2008, we started seeing aerobic systems. So, they've been in place seven years in parts of the community, and they are in the rural areas primarily. We, I can tell you, I can affirm that we don't have the ability to provide sewer service in the area. We do, though, have the authority to request validation from our customers that they are maintaining, and have them submit a sort of, a copy that, a copy of a document that shows that they have an agreement for maintenance, and that they are continuing with maintenance.
Well, so maybe that would be a solution that we require, or you already require that?
Yes.
So, David, I think there needs to be some...
Yeah, we can draft language. I'll work with Ms. Slaughter on that.
That would include that whatever we require be part of this, because I personally have a concern about this system, and I, you know, I think if there's a, you know, if it is allowed, it's complicated to deny their use, but I certainly think we ought to hold the highest standard...
Absolutely.
...to maintenance that we can. And if we have teeth in that, I would only be comfortable if we use the teeth.
Okay.
Was there any talk of trying to hook up the sewer system with Mustang, with the city of Mustang? Sort of agreement? I have no idea if that's even an option, it's just something that came to my mind.
Since this property drains from south to north, Mustang is upstream of us.
Okay. All right. Mark, did you wanna say something?
Let me ask you another question about aerobics, aerobic, the aerobic system. What, the quality of what comes out of the system, is it, how different it is, is it from the gray water that we use to water golf courses here?
Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Insulting, on behalf of the applicant. I can't tell you, it is treated water. It's, an aerobic system is a smaller version of your city sewer system. Your city sewer system on a mass scale treats with air. An aerobic system is a small, private system that treats with air, that allows the microorganisms to grow and eat the bacteria in the water, and that's what keeps the, that's what causes the, it to be clean water when it comes out.
But is it, give me a comparison. We use it on, we have some golf courses, municipal golf courses, that use it.
I, you know, I don't, I don't know how different it is from gray water.
I mean, on a scale of one to ten, is a private aerobic system five, and a, and a system like we use where we really actually go through a mass treatment of, is that a seven? I mean...
I say, I, it's treated to the same level as your application on the lawn, as it is in the discharge to the rivers.
I mean, there are cities now that are using gray water to do all their watering in parks and medians and all kinds of places.
Which means it's not harmful to citizens. Your DEQ would not permit it.
I was just trying to get a comparison, though, to be sure that the water that comes from a private aerobic system is no different than that water that sprayed on the parks in St. Petersburg.
It's, there should be no difference in the outcome of that treatment system. It's treating an individual sewage with air. You're treating on a mass scale with air. The discharge should be at the same level.
Larry, I know you've been working, Larry, I know you've been working on this issue with, meeting with the neighbors, and you wanna, kinda, how's that gone? 'Cause I know the neighbors have had concerns and...
Yeah, let me, let me wind up. Are there any more questions from any of the council?
Come on up. I know you declined to speak earlier, but we can hear from you now if you'd like. Need your name and address for the record, though.
Homoyun Amadiradari, fifty-four hundred Pleasant Hill Road.
Okay.
Couple of times last year, we've had issues with the bridge on Morgan Road completely getting destroyed or getting blocked, and we didn't have access on Morgan Road because of the debris that was flowing downstream. Now, what's gonna happen with all those homes going in there with the size of...
Where is the bridge on, is it...
Bridge is just north of those, see, it'd be about Forty-Fourth Street.
Okay.
Where the two creek come together.
So, Twenty-Fourth Street's what, thirty-five blocks?
Forty-Fourth Street.
Forty-Fourth Street, so a mile away.
Southwest Forty-Fourth.
Okay.
Okay? And lot sizes that they were mentioning, that they use the aerobic system, what size lot are they that she was referring to?
Half acre. I mean, that's what the DEQ allows. So, in this city, you have a host of half-acre lots that utilize these systems. You might have some larger, but the half-acre lot size, I know I've been involved in at least three or four developments in both Councilman Wise Ward and Councilman McAtee's Ward that utilize these systems.
So, is that the minimum requirement?
The half acre is the minimum requirement for DEQ to permit the aerobic systems.
Okay. Thank you. Larry, you wanna sum it up for us?
Yeah, let me wrap it up, though. This has been going on, as the protesters and the applicant have said, for a number of months. There've been a number of meetings. It was brought before the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission, basically, over the question of the aerobic system, denied it. Then, there was a meeting held yesterday here at City Hall. The applicant was here. The city staff of the departments that were impacted and involved in this were all present. Planning, Public Works, who else was here? Legal and Traffic were here and looked at this. There was good discussion back and forth. There was a couple of minor concessions made at that meeting. Some of the other concessions have been made earlier. With respect to the drainage, I think it's important to note that our staff report, when it was originally prepared and was authenticated again yesterday, does not require any detention on this particular site. And the applicant has agreed to apply and install detention on this pond, which should be a positive impact over the flooding that is occurring around the area. Is it gonna stop water coming from Mustang? No. The option of detention is to make sure that this site does not produce any more runoff than is currently being done, and that is in the, in the PUD. So, that's, that's the situation, addressing that. We've had two suggestions, very good suggestions from council, over the aerobic system. One of them was to require in the homeowner's agreement that maintenance of their septic system was the responsibility of the homeowner, and it would be required. Am I correct in that, David?
Correct.
Okay. And then there was a second thing that Marcia Slaughter brought up, that the homeowner has to submit a certificate to the city showing that they do have a functioning aerobic system, and that needs to be a part of the PUD also, which should address the question of the PUD, the aerobic system. Now, here's the other situation we're in. We have to make sure that what we do is in conformance with the legal restrictions that are in effect right now. And Kenny, as we're talking right now, do I have, as a councilman, the authority to go against the legal opinions that, if this is legal, don't I have to kind of accept that for right now?
If it, if it's a legally, a legal septic system, then you really have, just have to accept it. We couldn't win in district court based on an objection that they're proposing to use that septic system if it's legally permitted.
Okay. So, that's, that's the other dimension here. With everything being said, I think I have the obligation. Unfortunately, I have to go against the neighbors. I've heard about the concessions that we're in. I think it's a workable solution. I move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes. All right. Item nine C is an issue up for final hearing today. This has to do with planning and trying to figure out how we can allow horseback riding in certain areas along the river. Doug Cupper's introduced this item to council, and I don't know that, is Doug here?
Mark.
Okay. If Doug could come in, I had a couple of questions on this before we vote.
I'm sure he'll be in.
All right, here he is. Doug, you know, I was wondering, how compatible is the surface of a trail with horse traffic? And are, are we gonna allow the horses to be part of the trail system?
Thank you, Your Honor. Apologize for being tardy. The intent of this ordinance is to allow us to pursue opportunities that would allow us to create equestrian trails separate from our paved bike paths. So, they're not really compatible for each.
Okay, I think there's been some confusion on that, that people were thinking our trail system is gonna be used by horses, and how compatible is that? But you're saying, the idea is to create a separate trail system for horses...
That is correct.
And, and so, people can, might get one trail confused with another trail, but in staff's mind, they are separate types of trails.
They are definitely separate, and we would have adequate signing on, on both situations so that horseback riders that might find themselves on our paved bike trails would know that they're acting inappropriately, and to direct them to the equestrian trails and vice versa. We don't want mountain bikers to think that the equestrian trails are their domain as well.
Right. Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Is there a motion on this item?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're voting on item nine C, and it passes unanimously. Item nine D is also up for final hearing today, and this has to do with the criteria selected for future demolitions. We have a motion... We have a motion, is there a second? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9E comes to us from the Traffic Commission, there are two items, the first is in Ward 6, and this has to do with metered parking on Main Street near Hudson. Meg, you okay with this?
Uh, yes, mayor, I'm fine, this, yeah, as you just mentioned, has to do with the perimeter of the 499 Sheridan site during the construction period. I would move approval.
All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. And item 9E2 is a parking issue in Ward 8, it's up near 187th and May. Mark?
I'd move the item for approval.
All right, cast your votes here on 9E2, and it passes unanimously. Item 9F is an item being introduced today, and city staff, can I tell us more about this?
Cindy Richard is going to explain that to us, as she's coming forward. The state legislature this year, in amongst their other actions, preempted cities from regulating knives. And so, since we can't do that, there's state law regarding to that, we are modifying our local ordinances and respond to that. Come on up, Cindy.
All right, so, Cindy, this is in, in general to get us in compliance with state law?
That's exactly right, we've been preempted on knives in the same manner that we're preempted on firearms.
Okay.
And I apologize for the emergency section of the ordinance, but to meet the November 1st effective date on the statute, that's why it's there.
All right.
I'd move for approval.
Would it cover machetes?
Machetes, yes, I think.
Or side swords, like they wore in the Civil War, would, would, would we not be able to prevent people from wearing those in public places now?
There, well, I'll tell you the truth, there are a lot of exceptions under the state statute, but the statute's very clear that we don't get to have concurrent jurisdiction on any of those issues.
Yeah, so, so the point is, we're, there's, it's not like they're taking all laws away from handling knives, the point is that the state is now exercising its authority to handle these laws and not allowing municipalities to have their own laws.
That's exactly it.
That's basically the point, so our.
Violations would be state charges.
Our hands are tied, and.
Yes.
But I have this machete that I made to cut brush with, could I carry it to, to a thunder game, maybe? No. Well, could I bring it to City Hall with me? I mean, I just want to point out the ridiculousness of what they're doing. One more time, have I ever done that before?
Yeah.
Just one more.
Item just being introduced today, and we'll be applying the emergency because we need it to be in effect on November 1st.
That's correct.
So being introduced and up for final hearing today, unless council has reasons that we can't imagine that you would want to push this further. Okay, how about a motion, then, put this into, into compliance?
I'd just like an answer on my machete question, though, before I go.
I'll look into that, councilman.
I move approval.
All right. Cast your votes on the ordinance, passes unanimously. Now we need a motion on the, on the emergency? All right, cast your votes on the emergency, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you, mayor.
Item 9G is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9G? All right, we have a motion and a second, cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item 9H is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9H? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9A, or 9I is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings, and is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9I? Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 9J is a public hearing regarding removal of property from the abandoned building list, and there is one property in Ward 5 that's listed here. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on this item? All right, how about a motion, then, to move this forward? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9K is a public hearing, and this would create the Business Improvement District in the Adventure District. This is a public hearing today, did anyone show up today hoping to speak on this item?
Just those in support.
Okay, we do have some people that have signed up in support, if you'd like to speak, you come all the way down here. All right, you guys are good? All right. We have a motion and a second, and many of the managers of property in the Business District are here, so cast your votes, it passes unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, recognize, we have softball Hall of Fame, the zoo, Bremington Park, the soccer energy. The science museum, who am I missing out? Did I cover everything, Devery?
Mr. Perry.
Oh, yeah, and missing, all right, thank you.
We appreciate you guys working together on that, it's going to make the Adventure District a better place. All right, we're on to item 9L, and this is a resolution that would approve three at-large appointments for TIF 11. Is there a motion? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9M, I understand we do need executive session on this item, how about a motion to move 9M to executive session? Cast your votes.
Yes.
It passes unanimously. And likewise, on item 9N, we need executive session on that item as well.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there a second? All right, cast your votes, and that item moves into executive session. Item 9O, I understand we do need executive session, is there a motion there? Cast your votes, it passes unanimously. And item 9P would represent a bargaining agreement with the firefighters. Jim, negotiations concluded successfully?
They're concluded, and it's been adopted by IAF.
Fantastic, glad to hear it. And we have a motion and a second, all right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9Q is claims recommended for denial, we have one person that has signed up to speak, Jelonda Ketron. Good morning. Jelonda, could we get your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Jelonda Ketron, I live at 3228 Northwest 35th Street. I am here concerning the easement on my property. The definition of easement is the right to use the real property of another for a specific purpose. The easement itself is real property interest, but legal title of the underlying land is retained by the original owner for all purpose. Easements can be created by a deed to be recorded, just like the real property interest, the continuation and open use of the non-owner against the rights of the property owner for statutory number of years, or the equity fairness, including giving the access, landlocked piece of property, sometimes called easement of necessity. You'll notice that I have an exhibit 2, which is the plat for the area out there and my property, and it does show that there is a drainage system and a utilities easement. This information has been communicated to Jared Norris, Raj Krishner, Danny Herrera, and Eric Wanger, who is responsible for the maintenance. The law is fairly clear about who is the responsibility for maintaining an easement. The person or party using an easement, known as an easement holder, has the duty to maintain it. Easement holders don't become owners of the land attached to their easement, though, and within the limits of actual landowners retain most rights over it. The city has not upheld the responsibility as the easement holder to maintain the easement set forth by the law. Therefore, the lack of attention by the easement holder has created financial burden to the easement owner. The neglect by the city, the easement holder, to fulfill the responsibility has created undue burden for the easement owner for financial upkeep of the easement. The neglect is continuous over many years, the city, the easement holder, has been in control of the real property. It is the neglect that has created the expense to the easement owner. The expense incurred by the easement owner on behalf of the city are directed, directly due to the neglect over the years to the city. The city easement holder would incur the expense to assess, to access the area along the drainage ditch and spillway when access is required. The above will happen in future as there is continuous deterioration of the drainage ditch. The city, the easement holder, could and should have completed the, at the time the work was done in early September on the spillway. The original easement was recorded on November 1958, which is at the time Will Rogers Morris Edition was built. This easement extends all along the drainage ditch system, and all the homeowners, easement owners are directly affected by the easement. The easements were recorded in the easement book 1383, page 589, and book 1532, page 448. The city council, or the city's council, did an investigation or, and a recommendation to deny this. However, I believe, and other homeowners out there believe, that this area needs to be addressed and communicated to us and taken care of.
How, how did you come up with the damages of $9,290?
$9,290, the tree roots from that area, that is the responsibility of the easement holders, has deteriorated the fence along my property by growing through the slats and across into my property. I have put together bids to have the fence rebuilt and to correct, try to correct more of that issue on the easement.
Okay, and that, so that's the amount. You want to give us some information from staff, Tina?
The, the easement for drainage, that's back there, is, is a right for us to use it for drainage purposes, but it does not include our maintenance of that property other than for the purposes of the easement. In this case, that's a big concrete drainage channel that runs through there, which is fine. Easement owners have, still have maintenance responsibility and upkeep for the property, and her, her property line runs to the channel. So, where her fence is, is on her property, behind her fence is also her property, and it has not been maintained. The trees that are growing there and all of, all of vegetation there are naturally occurring conditions of the property. The city can't be held liable for damages resulting from naturally occurring conditions of the property, nor do we have any duty to maintain that, nor have we gotten complaints that, that would have drawn us out there to take a look at it. As far as I can tell, I see only one work order ever in connection with that area. So, it's not like we've been called all the time or refused to go, it's just the trees have grown like trees do, next to a stockade fence. The fact that she can't get through her fence to get back there is not a condition that's caused by the city. But that's her property where those trees are, those are her trees.
I see, and the fence that she's describing is on her property, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Does our easement extend, does our easement extend to the property where the trees are growing?
Drainage easements are always on other people's real property. I am not absolutely certain that the drainage easement runs all the way up to her fence, but there is a drainage channel back there.
That's, I'm just trying, we have a channel.
We have a channel back there.
Obviously, we have an easement there.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just trying to see if our easement.
Yes, ma'am.
Extended to the property outside of the.
I'm not sure about that, but it really doesn't legally make any difference.
If you check, if you check the plat, you will see that the easement does butt up to my property. There is a concrete barrier around the property where my fence sits. Since 1958, that has been established as the easement for the city. It is our contention that if the, and there have been multiple complaints for a period at least dating back to 2013, with John Krishner and the Homeowners Association. These bills and emails have gone back and forth between Jared Norris, Danny Herrera, Raj, and I don't know that I have his name correct, Krishner, Ed Winger, and Ed Shadid.
Okay, you know.
Let me ask you a question about that.
Yeah, sure.
The, who built the concrete base for your fence?
It was built by the original builders of, or developers of this addition.
Couldn't, couldn't, couldn't she fence behind that, if she wanted to?
It's her property.
No, I cannot fence.
She could fence all the way to the edge of the concrete?
Wouldn't, wouldn't be very practical in case there was some flooding, but I don't see why she couldn't.
But she could.
No, that area has been deteriorated to the point that you cannot do that. There is a chain link fence.
I'm asking, I'm asking a question of legally, could you do it?
As far as I know.
Legally, it could have, it could have been done, I used to live on a place that had a drainage facility behind me, and we fenced all the way to the drainage facility.
And I believe that it could also be done in this case. It would need to be cleaned out now, but, yes.
And, and, and I took the risk, one time it flooded and I had to rebuild my fence, but, but I, but I didn't want to give up that much of my backyard. Is that the same, is the same situation here?
I believe so.
And I would point out that even assuming that the easement was the city, is the city's property, and that we could go on there and remove the trees, we're not liable under the Torque Claims Act, it specifically says we're exempt from liability if a loss or claim results from natural conditions of property of the political subdivision.
The city has already gone out there at one point and taken down the trees, they have already established that they have a responsibility and a liability for that area. They have done that, and they have done that prior to November of 2014. They took down a considerable amount of trees. I have gone out there and taken down the remainder of the trees, and there are at least five additional trees that need to come down because of the erosion due to the 500-year flood problems in that area. There are other people, and we have recently, in September, had them out looking at the easements all along that property, all along that drainage ditch. Those walls are going to deteriorate because the city has neglected to fulfill its responsibility in having the easement. The easement is recorded in the books, and the easement does state that the easement holder is responsible for the maintenance of that property.
No, this, the easement holder is going to be responsible for the maintenance of the structure it put in for the purposes of this public utility, this drainage easement.
Not according to the law.
But we do not have a duty to maintain her property behind her fence that is her property. We have probably been out there, and, and when we checked for notices, prior notices for maintenance back there, we checked for her property. I did not check for the entire neighborhood, it's quite possible, some other complaints have been made, but, and that we've come out and done some work, but it does not assume liability for the city that we went out to help the citizens with something.
Yeah, Jelonda, you've heard our city staff, and I can't speak for the whole council on how they're going to vote, but I suspect they're going to support the legal opinion. That doesn't mean that you don't have legal rights, I know you believe you're legally on solid footing here, that you can file a suit against the city in, at the county courthouse and pursue your, your, your legal options.
And I intend to do so.
But I didn't want to say that this is, so this is not the, the final opportunity for you to, to make your case, but I suspect the council is going to follow the direction of our, our legal staff.
Then I ask that we set this aside until we can come to an agreement, or I can file the, the suit against the city.
Well, I suspect we're going to go ahead and, and leave it on the docket today, but you are, you know, not encouraged, but certainly reminded of your legal rights to go across the street and, and pursue the matter further. Thanks for your passion on this, and, you know, we've, we've had some incredibly large rains, both in the spring of 1913, I mean, 2013 and 2015, and we're dealing with it all over the city. You heard the zoning case, we had a half hour ago, and the neighbors there concerned about the, the additional development in their area, and they're basing a lot of their perceptions on the flooding on these incredibly large events that have occurred. And so, you know, it's real, I mean, we, we're not sure that that's not going to happen again, and, you know, we have a lot of engineers that say it's unlikely, but it, you know, it's already happened twice in, in a three-year span. So, we're concerned about it, and, and we're all affected, and we, we know that you're affected negatively by it, too. So, we're, we're, we're not without sensitivity on this issue, but we're going to have to follow our legal staff's advice, and, and wish you good luck in, in pursuing the matter.
Thank you.
All right, how about a motion on the list of denials? All right, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item 10?
Okay.
Okay. This is claims recommended for approval. Is there a motion on item ten? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And then item eleven is items from council. Sir, I'm hoping we didn't pass by your, your issue.
You did.
Okay. Where was it on the agenda?
Side nine.
All right. On claims recommended for denial.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, come on forward. Which item would you like to speak on?
On the first one.
Are you Dale Blake?
I am.
All right. We'll need your name and address for the record.
My name's Dale Blake, one-one-seven-four-four Blue Moon Avenue.
Okay. And tell us a little bit about the claim.
Well, the, the city dump truck or else of the city recycle truck, one of them had come around the corner and hit my mailbox, and my mailbox is sitting on, I live kind of on a cul-de-sac on the corner, and, and when they turned that corner, what it is is a new neighbor moved in, and they normally put their trash cans on the other side, but they put them between the two mailboxes, and there's only about twenty feet there. So when they come around that corner to, to get the neighbor's trash dumpster to dump it, someone had hit that, my mailbox, and the reason for the denial is because I didn't have a bid on what it would cost to fix it. And I have that with me today if we need to take care of that.
Let me get some advice from legal. Tina's got a lot of files over there. She has a lot of cases to deal with, so we might give her a moment to collect her thoughts. But Tina, anything you want to add on, from what he said?
I missed most of what he said.
Yeah, it was item A, and he says that one of our trash trucks damaged his mailbox, and, and he filed a claim, and it was denied because of the bidding process that he was to go out there to prove his claim was inadequate.
Wow.
What is this?
Who's this?
It's item number one.
Item, item one A.
It also looked like there may have been an independent contractor issue.
Yeah, that's what I have on this. I was confused by that statement. Our indications are that we did not pick that stuff up, that that was actually done by Waste Management Incorporated, which is not us, in which case we have no liability for the acts of independent contractors. And I believe that the claimant was informed that his claim really should be directed at Waste Management. It should have had all the information for contact for Waste Management in the letter we sent to him recommending the denial.
Okay.
From what I can see in the documents, we referred him the name of Waste Management. That's the appropriate place for him to make the claim.
Okay.
Yes.
Does that make any sense?
So from this point, I need to contact Waste Management.
Yes, sir.
Take care of it.
Yes.
And then does it come back to the city council?
No. It's a private issue with Waste Management. Is my...
Okay.
Yes, that's true.
All right.
All right. Thanks. Sorry for your troubles.
I would assume this kind of thing happens, not frequently, but often. Do we have a system that, that when we get a claim like this, that we refer that directly? Seems to me these independent contractors, we ought to be able to just refer the claim to them as a, as a service to the citizen. You get a guy who's gone all the way through the process, he's come down here and...
Councilman, I think the letter's pretty clear that, as to why it was denied and contact information, how to file the claim with Waste Management.
Okay. Well, could we go a step further and forward the claim to Waste Management? I mean, it seems to me, you know, most people are not expert political science to know the difference between independent contractors and, and city responsibility. And I recognize we did the right thing today, but it seems to me it would be very simple just to make a system that a little bit more accommodating.
We can certainly forward the claim that they filed with us to the independent contractor. Two issues, the contractor might not consider that to be a claim by the claimant against them.
Understand.
And then also the claimant would have to affirmatively follow that up.
Right. But we could do that and include it in the letter, and it seemed to me just wouldn't take any more trouble to do it that way, and this guy would have avoided all that.
And we could put something in the letter to the effect that the claimant needs to, we have forwarded the claim to the independent contractor, and the claimant needs to pursue it against them.
Just, it's just a thought. Just a...
All right.
Kenny, I also just, I also noticed in one of these other cases where we actually approved a claim and it was an independent contractor, it appeared to be on the basis of the fact that the independent contractor acted upon our advice to initiate the work. I mean, it was the first time I think I've ever seen a claim that we actually approved that was done by an independent contractor. And Tina, I don't know if, it's not in this stack.
It's the Walter Wilson confession.
Yes, it was a confession. Yeah, exactly. And I had never seen that before, but it appeared that they acted only on our advice.
I believe they got bad information, the independent contractor got bad information about the location of the easement in that case from us.
Okay. That was just interesting to me to see that.
All right. We're on item eleven, on items from council. And we have recommendations from the council's legislative committee, and Jane Abraham is here to talk about our legislative agendas at both the federal and state level.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Jane Abraham, Community and Government Affairs Manager in the City Manager's Office. And I'm just going to run through these quickly. I don't want to, you have in your packet the, more detail about the specific issues. And so let me just kind of briefly go through the process. We have a similar process every year in terms of how these issues are generated. The city manager asks the department heads if they have legislative items or things that they've come across that need a fix either at the state or the federal level. And then these items are researched and additional information gathered and brought to the council legislative committee, at which point they're also considered and possibly shuffled around, and, you know, additional information is gone through at that point. And then the committee makes the recommendation to council, and we work with our contracted lobbyists, and that is the Taylor Group is our state lobbyist, and the Potomac Consultants are our federal group. And so we work with them to achieve these legislative issues in their respective legislatures. So just a brief overview of what happened last year. So at the state level, we had quite a few issues that were successful. We were able to amend restrictions for the location of dog kennels, and so that was to, really an economic development issue in terms of allowing dog grooming facilities. That law had been overly broad, and so it was narrowed in scope to allow dog grooming facilities that have become in high demand in terms of our, a lot of the dense infill housing, both downtown and in midtown, people wanting those services. And then we, with Senate Bill three-seventy-six, will allow us to recover fees when accepting credit card payments, which is the same as what the state can do. And so we're, we were trying to get essentially on the same playing field as that, as the state, which is the same with House Bill twenty-one-nineteen was to modify the Competitive Bidding Act to allow extended award time, which the state had, and we now also have that. And then House Bill ten-thirty-seven amended the Open Records Act to address some of the concerns that law enforcement had that may come about with the body worn cameras and some of the privacy issues that were, would be raised with that. And so our issues for two thousand and sixteen, first of all, in terms of our priority issues, local control over local issues is something we constantly work toward. It's a significant challenge for us at the legislature. We've talked about that many times. It's very challenging to try to maintain local control over items that we believe belong in the local realm as opposed to being preempted by the state. So that's a constant challenge for us. The second item is to work on increase in funding for transit. This will be very difficult. I'm sure you've all heard the reports coming out of the state that they are looking at a significant budget hole to fill next year. They're looking at cutting their budgets in the current year by ten percent. I think that executive order came out from the governor's office yesterday. So it's a significant financial challenges at the state level, and that will, that will impact everything that happens out there, is my guess, in terms of how we try to deal with items in two thousand and sixteen. And then the third one is to, we monitor any efforts to exempt sales tax on the existing sales tax base. Our sales tax is tied to the same market basket as the state's sales tax basket, and so we work very hard to limit the exemptions that will eat into our tax base as well. So our initiative issues, this just, this means the bills that we are going to work toward accomplishing in the upcoming session. We, the first item is to try to recoup our unpaid water, wastewater and drainage utility bills and be able to place liens to collect those, those fees that are not currently being collected. We can't stop picking up people's trash. We can't stop providing wastewater services. And so that's one of those challenges that we have, that sometimes that portion of the bill goes unpaid, and it's very difficult for us to, to collect that. And so we're trying to address that issue. The second item is to look at billboard relocation legislation. This issue cropped up here recently. We kind of came across, rules had been changed, whereas ODOT, if they're doing a relocation for a particular highway, it can be relocated anywhere within the same district without taking into account local ordinances. And so we've got concerns over that because we do have appearance corridors where we're trying to limit billboard locations. So we're trying to, I guess, to take back some of that local control in terms of having those local ordinances taken into account. The next item is dealing with motor vehicle strap and recycling ownership documentation. Right now, all that's required is a bill of sale, which can be very easy to forge, and so we're trying to tighten up that requirement that will actually require a form from the tax commission that has a stronger validity in terms of the ownership of a vehicle when that's turned into a recycling facility. And so this was brought forward by our police department to try to counteract the theft of vehicles that are taking place in our state. The next item is to amend disaster animal statute, which was enacted last year. And the intent of that legislation was to try to address some of the challenges that we came across when, in the two thousand and thirteen tornado disasters with animals that were being held by local, or by rescue groups. But the application of it applies to all shelters, and so we need to amend some areas of that that will address our specific situation in terms of the number of animals that we take in on a daily basis in terms of stray animals. The fourth, or the next item is to amend the animal cruelty statutes, and this will provide for local prosecution of willful and malicious, malicious acts of cruelty to animals. Currently, those are in the realm of a felony, and so what we're trying to do is to change that into a misdemeanor so that we can address those at the municipal level. And then the next item is to enact legislation to fully fund and provide nine-one-one emergency services. And this is an issue that's, really a statewide issue in terms of having greater coordination statewide for nine-one-one services, and also to be able to address the technological challenges that are coming up in, in providing nine-one-one. So some of our support, and support issues, support and oppose issues. The first is to oppose changes to the asset forfeiture program. These, some proposals were brought forward last year that we feel would be detrimental to our law enforcement efforts in this area. The second item is to retain tools for economic development. That's something that tends to come up every year, trying to modify provisions of TIF and Business Improvement Districts, et cetera. And so we want to retain those tools. The third item is to protect clean water supplies. That's something, water issues are very, loom very large at the state in terms of water supplies and, and how water is being used throughout the state. And so we want to protect our clean water and consumptive uses. The fourth item is to support Amtrak and passenger rail. Currently, the Heartland Flyer is funded by the state of Oklahoma and the state of Texas, and we want to continue to keep that service going and expand passenger rail wherever we, wherever we can. And then the last item is to oppose efforts to impose unfunded mandates on municipalities or diminish, diminish existing revenue. And this again speaks to the, the challenge of trying to fill the budget gap at the state level, you know, just trying to make sure that we watch out for ways that that may impact the city and new responsibilities that we may be asked to do. So in terms of our federal legislative agenda, the first item is the Remote Transactions Parity Act. If you all will remember, the Marketplace Fairness Act was passed in the Senate, and this is very similar. This is the House bill, and it's just trying to address this issue of collection of sales taxes on the internet and having that be the responsibility of the vendor. The second, the second item is, of course, we are very interested in funding for transportation and transit. That's critically important. Hopefully now at the federal level, they're working on finishing a budget deal, and hopefully they'll also then be able to complete the, the transportation legislation. So that's very important to us. And so hopefully that will be kind of next in the queue in terms of items that they can deal with shortly. The third item is to support Tinker Air Force Base, which is a major employer, major part of our community. We also want to retain the tax-free status of municipal bonds. That's something that has come up in trying to address revenue issues and budgetary issues in the federal level, and it's, is important to us. We support airport funding and FAA operations, another critical part of our aviation and a critical part of our economy here in Oklahoma City. And we are monitoring the Clean Air Act enforcement standards. New standards came out recently. Oklahoma, we, our metropolitan area still will stay underneath that, that new level. We believe we are still in compliance, and so, but we watch that very closely to make sure that, we want to stay in compliance. Another item, economic development and local grant programs. CDBG and Home are two programs that are, have been, the funding has been cut kind of year after year, and so we support those programs that are very critical to our economic development efforts and to provide low-income housing in our city. We want to extend and renew the empowerment zone designation, which expired in two thousand and thirteen, because that is helpful in terms of trying to encourage development in that area. The next item is to amend federal regulations that pertain to the SBA revolving loan fund program. As those funds revolve out and become replaced with other funds, they still retain their federal characteristics and reporting requirements. And so what we'd like to be able to eventually at some point, be able to have those funds not meet all of those kind of paperwork and reporting requirements. And then the final item is, again, to support Amtrak and passenger rail service, because that is funded at the federal level also and is, is very important for our intermodal communication, intermodal transportation. And that's all I have. So if anybody has questions?
Comment your questions from Jane on the federal or the state legislative agenda we're moving forward with.
What do you think the tax fairness, tax equity situation is like?
Good question. You know, it's really encouraging that we have, so a bill was passed in the Senate, and this is the House bill. I think it's encouraging, Jason Chaffetz is the author of the Remote Transactions Parity Act, and he is very popular and has done a really good job of gathering bipartisan support for this issue. So that's encouraging. The committee where it is housed at the moment is, Chairman Goodlatte has different ideas about whether it should be based on point of delivery versus point of origin, and so that's kind of one of those technical battles that's sort of taking place over, over definitions. over definitions and that kind of thing. It's hard to know. I mean, with the new, there's, we've got a new speaker coming in, some things may shift around in terms of chairmanships and it's, so it's hard to know. But I think we've been working on this issue for a very long time. And so we're really in a better position probably than we ever have been in terms of having bipartisan support and having two bills that are viable in both the House and the Senate.
It's certainly significant to the city, so it would make a tremendous difference.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions for Jane? All right. Jane, thanks for your work. Keep us informed.
Okay, thank you.
We need to have a motion then to adopt the state and federal legislative agendas. Is there a motion? All right. Cast your votes on 11A. It passes unanimously. And then we need one on 11B, which is the federal aspect of it. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right. Continuing on items from Council. James, you have anything for us? Larry? All right. Pete?
Just a brief comment about the Southern Oaks Learning and Wellness Campus Project that's on the water bill this time. It's, it's been a long path to get to where we are, but we, I think we've successfully crossed the bridge. There is a bridge in the project also. Crossed the bridge to make it happen. It's really going to be a nice facility. It's a good, it's a new idea to, to provide the synergy of a library and a couple of higher education institutions and a public school and a park and a rec center, all in one, and a wellness center, all in one location. It's really a forward-looking idea, and I'm hoping that some of it may translate into ideas when we decide to locate the third and fourth senior wellness centers to try to use that synergy that I see developing in this facility to try to get more bang for our buck in those, in those facilities. So I was really pleased with it. We had, we've had six public hearings on it. And it, the last one was, at the end of it, I said, well, I think we're going to move forward and I'll keep everybody advised. And one of the ladies that had been fairly vehemently opposed said, I'll be watching you. So I figure that's an indication she's ready to go forward too. So it was, I was really pleased with it. Great cooperation from all the entities involved, UCO, OCCC, City County Health, Parks. I mean, it's really good, I'm really pleased with it.
Yeah, well, you should be. It's, I know you shepherded that project and it needed all of your shepherding to get to where it is. Meg?
Two quick things, Pete. Really, congratulations on the project. I had a really long conversation with my Parks Commissioner last night, who's been intimately involved, I think. And her comment, and I don't know whether this has happened, but were you able to get the, is it Walker that we could bring all the way through to create kind of a circular, continue the street through that goes by the park?
Yes, Walker.
Okay. So is that gonna?
It, it has a kind of a fish hook to a cul-de-sac in front of the school and the rec center. And the idea, it's, you know, the schools were built before everybody, Mama brought them to school. We used to walk to school. And, and so there's no way to get the cars out now. And so we're going to bring the drive-out and it'll accommodate traffic circulation. It's really a, it's a nice solution to the traffic.
Great. That, that was her only comment. And then I just really would like to do a big shout out to the groups that have been helping me as we refine this conversation about our median safety ordinance and how we go. We had a great meeting last week with the homeless alliance, Catholic charities, the folks from The Voice, Ronan Whitley O'Connor that founded the Curbside Chronicle. And we've got lots of really good community input coming forward to help us refine and then expand some programming that will address the sort of emotional issue that came out from the community. I think we're really moving in the right direction. Appreciate everybody's support.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say happy birthday to, I will have to say, the world's best assistant, Debbie Martin. Last week was her birthday, so happy birthday, Debbie. President David Byrne has been pushing for sales tax for education. That idea is actually pretty interesting. I would just have to say that I hope more emphasis would be put on common education because that's where we have, where the system to me is broken is in common education. When we look at, the state just released its A through F report card. Unfortunately, 90% of the schools in my ward received below a C, and so, which is definitely heartbreaking. But I did have one school who made a 99 point, I think their score was a 99.25, which was KIP, a charter school. Now, I am a huge supporter for, of charter schools, but not all charter schools produce what KIP produces. So I do support quality education, but so happens, the number one school in Ward Seven is a charter school. Last week, I had the opportunity to take part of the interim study on TIFs that was called by Senator Kevin Matthews from Tulsa. He is interested in creating what's similar to what we created in Northeast Oklahoma City and North Tulsa. So it's definitely good to see that other cities are taking the approach of looking at TIFs for some of the disadvantaged areas such as Northeast Oklahoma City and North Tulsa. And I also want to thank city staff for attending that interim study with me and also Dan Bachelor, who spoke before me. And that ends my remarks. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, John. Mark?
Nothing today. Thank you.
All right.
Several things this morning under City Manager Reports. We're going to have the presentation on the 2015 Annual Performance Report. Excuse me. And Joanne McSpadden is here with us this morning.
Good morning. I'm Joanna McSpadden. I'm from the Budget Office, and I've got a presentation on the year-end performance for FY15. Before I get started, I wanted to talk about a couple of things you received in your packet.
This is in your packet if you want to follow along.
This is the annual performance report. This is really written with, with citizens in mind. It's meant to give them some information on performance, a brief overview of our performance program. And on the back, we have links where they can go to find additional information. The other document, the spiral-bound document, this is the year-end supplemental. This, this has all results and outputs for each department with year-end values for FY14 and FY15 and targets for FY15, so you can compare data in a couple of different ways. The budget book contains those same measures using estimates through December, and so this is sort of a follow-up to that document. And now I have a brief, brief presentation. It doesn't follow directly with those documents, but it does give some summary on performance for the year. So I'll begin with an update on each of the six council priorities and their respective progress indicators. We'll go through each of these, beginning with providing a safe and secure, secure community. This priority is about reducing crime and preventing and responding to fires and medical emergencies. Here we've listed each of the chosen progress indicators for this priority. You'll see we've grouped them similar to how we do in the five-year forecast to indicate whether they've moved in a positive, neutral, or negative direction as compared to last year. This is a little bit of a different way of looking at them than we do in the supplemental. In the supplemental, we use red, yellow, green, and blue indicators as compared to the targets. And here again, we're just doing the year-over-year trend. I'm not going to go through each of the priorities, but I'd be happy to answer questions if you have them. Here, I'll just point out that you can see we do have several positive indicators for this priority. And a note about the one negative indicator, you may remember Dr. Goodlow was here last year and actually discussed the 45% that I'm comparing this to. And it was an exceptional year, a performance year for them, and I think an all-time high. And so that's just a note about the one negative there. Moving on to maintain strong financial management, this is about managing costs within our available revenues, promoting opportunities for our citizens, and identifying areas for greater efficiency. And here we've got the chosen indicators listed again. A couple of points I'll make are that you can see two of the positive indicators here, I've got the year next to them. That information's delayed that we received from the Census Bureau, so I just wanted to point that out. Next, moving down the list to the, the third neutral indicator, I wanted to point out, the percent of unbudgeted reserves in the general fund did actually decrease just slightly this year compared to last, but we were still above our eight to 15% range in our financial policy, so we put it in the neutral category. Finally, a note about the, with the one negative indicator, weekly earnings is something that we monitor very closely because Russell Evans has pointed out to us that this is a leading indicator for our sales tax trends. And unfortunately, this indicator has been down for 15 of the last 17 months. Next, we have promote thriving neighborhoods. This is about recognizing that neighborhoods are the building blocks of a great city and that we should continue to support revitalization efforts. For the indicators here, a couple of notes that I'll make about the neutral indicators. They're in that category because these are single data sets. We don't yet have comparison data for those two measures. The abandoned building survey was conducted before the program was implemented. And the, the second measure about code, code actions that are proactive, we just began collecting data on that last year, so we'll have comparison data for that next year. And for the two negative measures, the first is a citizen survey measure. We compared that question asked in 2015 to the results of a similar but differently worded question in 2014. So that may have a little something to do with the change in performance there. And then the final measure actually only declined by one and a half percentage points, so just a very slight decline on that one. Next, we have develop a transportation system that works for all citizens. This is about getting people where they need to go, using planning and design to construct complete streets, sidewalks, and trails, identifying that conditions of city streets is a top priority for our citizens, and to work with our partners for regional solutions. Here, I'll note that the first measure on trails and sidewalks is made up of the combined efforts of the MAPS Office, Public Works, and Parks. Two embark measures also showed positive improvement with an increase in service hours and more frequent service during peak hours. Related is the second-to-last measure of transportation ridership, which did see a slight decrease this year, but that is at least due in part to that increased number of service hours that we have listed as a positive. Next, we have support high-quality public education. This is about producing graduates that are prepared for future success and encouraging accountability to improve educational outcomes for our children. Here, we've listed the indicators, and again, I have the years next to them. The data that we received from the State Department of Ed and the Regents for Higher Education does lag a little bit for us. All of this data is based on Oklahoma City's I-89 School District. And a couple of notes I'll make, the first three indicators for ACT scores, graduation rate, and reading proficiency actually only moved up or down one or two percentage points, so not a lot of movement in those three. But the final indicator, the remediation rates, actually increased from 58% in 2011, 2011, to the 73% we have here for 2012. On a positive note, in 2011, only 324 students from Oklahoma City High Schools began college, but in 2013, we had 530. So that was a 68% increase there, or 64%, sorry. Next, we've got the final priority to enhance recreation opportunities and community wellness. This is about promoting healthy living and offering a wide variety of recreational opportunities for our citizens. Here, I'll note that the one neutral indicator, the wellness score, is only updated every three years. There is not one score per se. It's actually a compilation of score by zip code, and it's generated from a complex calculation using 30 or so health factors. Finally, I'll note on the last two measures, this decline does not yet represent a trend. The 2014 values that we're comparing to here were somewhat high when looking at the last five years or so on our citizen survey measure. Next, stepping away from the council priorities for a moment, this slide is meant to show the magnitude of the Leading for Results Program. Department staff are tracking over 1,400 measures, which is made up of about 600 result measures that illustrate the benefits received by our customers, a little over 500 output measures that capture workload for the programs, 166 demands, which show the demand placed on those programs by their customers, and finally, 136 efficiencies, which are a ratio of program expenditures to major outputs. I have a few remaining slides about some of the other measures tracked through the Leading for Results Program that we'll look at. I wanted to show these citizen survey measures, which you've seen before. You hear from Chris Tate every year at ETC, but I think it's worth saying again how well we stack up against the national averages in these citizen perception areas, specifically the quality of city services. While it's the lowest number on this chart, we have averaged 20 percentage points above the national average for the last several years. Next, we have an example of an output measure. This is capturing the workload of the City Clerk's Information Program, and you can clearly see the dramatic increase in the number of external information requests being responded to by their staff. The FY15 value represents 150% increase over the FY12 value. Another thing I'd like to point out about this measure is that about halfway through FY15, the Clerk's Office began conducting a point-of-service survey of their information program customers, and on average, 87% are satisfied with the services received. Next, I've got a measure here that's tracked at the airport, and it's the number of non-stop flights served by Will Rogers World Airport. Technically, you can see by the asterisks, we did in FY15 at 21. Service to Seattle didn't begin until July 1 of this year, but I thought it best to show the map in its updated form, so we currently have 22 non-stop destinations. And finally, the live exit rate at our animal shelter. This chart shows the gradual improvement over several years for this measure, going from only 28% in FY07 to ending last year at 69%. And notably, in December of last year, we actually achieved 81% out there. So that goes to show that the progress that they're still making. And I'll just end with a note that for the fifth year, Oklahoma City received the Certificate of Excellence from ICMA Center for Performance Analytics for the Performance Management Program Leading for Results. I believe this is not only a reflection of the work of our department staff in tracking and reporting data, our city facilitators who help each year during the business plan update, our office, who works really hard to facilitate the program, but also your leadership and support of the program. So thank you for that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the, the packet that you're, the information you received in your packet or the presentation.
I just had a quick question. We've got 1,460 so indicators, and I know it's important for consistency that we continue to look at those. And how often do we take a hard look at whether or not we're measuring the right stuff?
We look at it, first of all, the assistants and I look at it on a regular basis, and it's a hundred page, it's literally 100 pages of, of data that we go through. And I, I think every time we do, we, we come up with, should we really be measuring that? Or is that really, should we? So we're continuing refining it. But that isn't real, really where the real refinement comes through. The real refinement comes through every two years when each department goes through individually, when they do their own strategic planning, and they look at their own strategies and the best way to measure those and put them forward. So we do look at it constantly, and we just don't, we're very much data-driven. Not only do we generate the data, we review and analyze the data.
Yeah, Larry?
I just have an observation to maybe, maybe you could pass this along to some folks. In looking on page eight, the quality education page, I'm somewhat alarmed, but should I be alarmed at, at the information that's presented there? It indicates that the Oklahoma City Public Schools had a graduation rate of 73%, a decline from 75%. A graduation rates also declined for the major districts in the area. And then if you come down to process, progress indicators, it shows down there that ACT scores have remained kind of constant at 17, which I believe may even give somebody a problem in getting into OU. I don't know that for a fact, but I just, okay? So that concerns me. And then the reading scores in the third grade level seem to be coming down. And yet, we go to some school functions, and I come away from there thinking, everything is honeymoon and roses. So if somebody can help me out, not up today, but in a few, I'd really appreciate it.
Well, I'll, I'll offer a comment. Part of the graduation rate issue has come with increasing the standards for graduation. And whether that was the intention or the, or the, or the byproduct, I, I mean, I think that's a very real repercussion of, they have raised the standards for what it means to get a high school diploma in the I-89 district. And perhaps as a result, fewer kids have, have stayed in school and pursued that because they did not see a path to success because they were too far behind. You can, I'm not passing judgment on it, I'm just passing along that part of the reasoning is that we, we, we don't want to just be in the I-89 district handing out degrees to anyone who comes to class for 12 years. And we are trying to make it more rigorous, but at least on the short term, it appears that has reduced the number of kids who actually qualify for a degree after the 12th year. Hopefully, longer term, that won't be the case either.
I, I think your concerns are valid, but I will have to say there are mixed results. There are areas of improvement, there are some areas of excellence, but there are certainly areas that need improvement.
I would add that I think the, the public education problem is probably the largest dilemma we face. I mean, I think the, the problems involved in public education are so...
I mean, I think the problems involved in public education are so, they're so myriad that it's, I don't know how we're gonna get our arms around it. I think a lot of effort's been made to do it, and I think some good things are happening. But to look for short-term results in a situation as much of what Quagmire's public education is right now, I don't, I think we just have to, I don't think we can afford to give up on it. I mean, it's something we cannot afford to give up on, but it's, it is a major problem. I deal with some of those things in this project that I was, that we were talking about earlier about neighborhoods, that the mobility rate of the children. I mean, some of the schools, I know the school where Meg has been a reading buddy and the one where I have, have mobility rates of 50%. Half the kids that start there in September are not there in May. I mean, it's just, and I'm not sure that that's, regardless of the quality, they're not moving for the quality of education, they're moving because they have housing problems. It's just, I think it has to remain one of our priorities. I've always believed that common education is the foundation for the whole country, and we can't ever afford to quit, but I too share that disappointment that the results aren't coming in, but I think that just indicates we ought to redouble our efforts to try to fix it.
Right. Well, thanks very much for the report. We appreciate it.
One quick question. Average weekly earnings, you talked about a decline. Can you tell me the period, I was confused on the period of time for that decline, and what is the cause for the decline in your mind?
So the, I did make a note that 15 out of the last 17 months have shown a decline. Doug probably can elaborate more on that than I can, on the average weekly wage, monthly values that we...
Yeah, that's a statistic we get from the Labor Department, that, or actually, I think the Census Department that collects that. I mean, it's a number of factors, it's the number of hours people are working overtime, bonuses, those kinds of things. I mean, the data itself doesn't tell us why it's changing. I mean, our assumption is it's the downturn in the oil and gas industry is driving wages down. One of the things we're seeing is employment is up, the number of people working is higher than it's been each month, that's growing. So what I think we're seeing is a shift of people working in lower-paying jobs from those higher-paying oil and gas jobs. They're still working, they're just not making as much as they were before.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much.
Moving on to a couple of other items under City Manager Reports, we do have the annual EMSA Annual Renewal Update, and it's, I think it's important to point out that we're on not a good trend with the EMSA. It's gone from originally about an 89% rate of folks participating down to 73.5%. So we're gonna look internally as to our communications and what we can do to increase that in future years.
Who's responsible for that marketing? Is that from the city, or is that EMSA's responsibility?
It's, yes.
Yes. Okay. Let's figure out who's, yeah, who's doing it and do better.
Right, we handle the marketing of that through the water bill, and EMSA does some marketing as well for people in nursing homes and that sort of stuff, and so they help us with the materials and the information, but it is primarily through the city that we do that, since it's through, it's a collection for us through our utility bill process that we do that. One thing I'd note, I'm hoping that we're reaching sort of a stabilization point. You can see in that chart on the second page that our decline has been slowing each year. And so, as you'll recall, when we started the program, everyone was placed in the program, and then they had to make a choice if they wanted to opt out, they could. And so I think we had a number of people who maybe missed that first opportunity to opt out, so that second year was a significant decline, but it's been slowing each year since then. So I think we're finding kind of that steady state, so to speak, I'm hoping.
Doug, do you recall how we compared to Tulsa? It seemed to me that we were higher than they were for a while.
Right, Tulsa's is higher. When they began their program, they opted everyone in each year. So each year, if you opted out, you had to then make another phone call to say, "I don't want in this next year." The next year, they'd put you back in, you'd have to make the phone call. And so I think that may have helped keep their percentage higher. They no longer do that, now they're following our same model, that once you've made a choice, that stays with you, you don't have to call back to change that. So I don't know, theirs is higher, but I think it's because of the differences at the beginning of the program.
Have we used Channel 20 ever during enrollment period to...
I'd have to ask Kristi Jaeger on that. I believe that there are messages that are out there that, you know, I don't know that it's necessarily like a full commercial, but kind of those, I don't know what the right term is, kind of a little screenshot.
I think I see nodding from Kristi. We probably have, but we might take advantage of that as well.
What might be helpful, it's for me to turn my mic on. What also might be helpful is when someone opts out, what if we ask them why they're opting out? And that would allow us to gather the information about how the program could be better.
Great idea. Great idea.
Maybe some personal testimonials about the value of the service. I had to use it a couple of months ago, and I got my bill from Blue Cross, and after seeing it, where it started and where it wound up with a zero, I mean, it paid for itself for the rest of my life to pay that three bucks a month. I mean, this service was great, firefighters were great, EMSA was great, I mean, everybody was good, but, but, and I should've said something about it during the opt-in month, but I got the, you know how the medical billing is, it's a year or two after you have the event before you find out how much you owe. And I got this bill just about two weeks ago, and it starts out 1,400 bucks or $1,395 for a mile, and then it winds up at the bottom, it there's a zero there, and that's just, that's nice, that's a good feeling. Then the service was great also.
All right, Doug, thanks.
The next item is the October Sales Tax Collections Report. This is the fourth month of the fiscal year, so we're through the way through, and our collections, total sales tax collections are within 0.1% of last year. The bad news is we projected growth of a couple of percent, and so because of that, we are under target on the sales tax year-to-date, $1.6 million. Not good, but worst news is the use tax, because the use tax is down 20% from last year, and that's $2.5 million. So we're over $4 million down at this point in time, and the short-term projections don't look appreciatively better. We are looking at some things internally to monitor. I am going to implement a hiring freeze on November 9. Okay, thank you. In a week or two, so that's why we've got an opportunity. It won't be a hard freeze, we'll take a look at positions on a case-by-case basis, but that will give us some options and some flexibility as we go forward. You know, we like to do it this way because if we get into a situation where we do have to eliminate some positions, we prefer to eliminate vacant positions if we have to do that. And I'm not saying we're going to, but I think it's prudent at that point in time. If you recall, our reserves are still pretty strong as we're going into this, but it is a time of uncertainty.
Jim, is that use tax, can we tie that to lower construction, fewer construction projects, or...
I think it's mostly tied to the...
Mostly tied to energy?
To energy.
Okay.
And on a little bit more positive news, under the hotel tax collections, we are up 3.6% for the first quarter of '16, so that still remains relatively strong. We also have the interfinancial report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, citizens to be heard. We'll ask citizens to keep their comments to three minutes or less. We have one person that's signed up. Roy Stafford?
Roy Stafford, 1729 Northwest Third, 73106, the day center is the address I'm using. Good morning to the council, mayor, Ms. Kersey, Ms. Salier. Had you phoned me yesterday as requested, you would've got a prayer for your medical condition you were going through.
Roy, I wasn't in the office yesterday.
Oh, I understand. Councilman Pettis, I'm requesting a meeting with you after this meeting adjourns so that my wife and I can discuss a occurrence at the Baphylest, which you are deeply involved in. This is Beulah May's choice. This is my wife-to-be, Rebecca Marquez. Mom wanted me to end my relationship with Patricia. I was afraid of bringing a non-African-American female into the community at that time, but this was mom's choice. Somehow, God blessed me to have a second opportunity at happiness. I can no more do anything to change my perception in the community, and my perception of the community, I mean, of being a nigger. It's N-I-G-G-A. Then Mayor Cornet, you can do anything about your racial properties. We were born and we were raised, but we can evolve. Council Chief Ed Welsh, he evolved because he shared with me my story that I'm gonna share with the United States through a screenplay. I hope the meeting went well yesterday with Clay Bennett. I'm plugged in. There's someone contacting a friend of yours who is the older brother of the guy that I bought you the obituary on. We gotta do it. It's just the way it is. Me and you, we're gonna get it done.
Thanks, Roy. All right, we have executive session, we'll be back.